Say that the Wensocket School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, April 24, 2024 is now called to order at 7:00 PM. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
You please stand and join me in a moment of silence in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time I'll ask our principal, Ms. Kim Luca, to please present your students, and I guess you have a program to run for us. There we go.
As if I'm not loud enough. This year has really flown by, and we've done a lot this year with unity and anti-bullying, and we have three lovely students here to talk to you about some of the great things that we've done during this campaign. We also have Mr. Viera, who leads this campaign every year. He's our past teacher, and the great thing about him is that he's completely committed to these young folks in the class and also with ensuring that everyone is kind to one another. We decided not to do a PowerPoint presentation and to make it a little bit more personal. And we are giving you some of the pictures that we took without kids in them because of the media releases, some of the pictures we took at the Autumn Fest Parade that we create a float for every year. Last year, we won the Mayor's Award, and this year, we won an award for being in the actual parade. We are going to talk about some of the things that we have done on Unity Day and throughout the year for anti-bullying, and I thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, parents, students. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Without further ado, I present to you the Villanova Middle School students.
Good evening. I am Pete and mine, and I'm a Villanova. Well, we are the Villanovas of the Wensocket Middle School. And I'm a reader, so integrity is doing the right thing when no one is watching. C.S. For 2424 School Committee Meeting. Information from pacer.org, stopbullying.org, National Center for Educational Statuses. Reason for being bullied reported. The reasons for being bullied reported most often by students included physical experience,
The reasons for being bullied reported most often by students include physical appearance, race, ethnicity, gender, disability, religion, sexual orientation. Where does it happen? Bullying students report that bullying occurred in the following places: the hallway or stairwell at school, 43%, inside at the classroom, 42%, and in the cafeteria, 27%, and outside on school grounds, 22% online or by text, 15% in the bathroom or locker room, 12% and on the bus, 8%.
Interact, i.e. spreading rumors. Physical-verbal relationships, i.e. damaging someone's reputation. Sabotage relationships by attempting to get others not to like that person. Damage to property. This is punishable by the law. There is no federal anti-bullying laws, but 49 states have anti-bullying legislation.
Effects may last into adulthood. Sometimes group against person or a group, youth who both bully others and are bully are at greatest risk of behavioral, mental health, and academic problems. Best solutions may involve the entire school community creating a culture of respect. High standards make a huge difference in the community. When they intervene, bullying stops within 10 minutes, 57% of the time. Parents also make huge differences by maintaining communication. About 30% admit to bullying others. 70.6% say they have been bullied in American schools.
According to the Center for Disease Control, students who are bullied are more likely to experience low self-esteem and ice dilution, perform poorly in school, have few friends in school, have a negative view of school, experience physical symptoms such as headaches, stomachaches, or sleeping problems, and experience mental health issues such as depression, suicidal thoughts, and anxiety. Bullying affects witnesses as well as targets. Witnesses are more likely to use tobacco, alcohol, or other drugs, have increased mental health problems, and miss or skip school.
The scars of bullying can sometimes last a lifetime. School-based bullying prevention programs decrease bullying by up to 25%. Effective bullying prevention efforts involve students, parents, teachers, and community members. A community-wide effort shows students that adults care what happens to them and that they are not alone.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to ask you, please, to draw yourself on that white piece of paper that was handed to you. It can be a stick figure. You don't have to be a Picasso or Monet. I'm burnt.
I'm not a good drawer.
After you draw your lovely stick figures, please write a statement of your dreams as a child, what you want it to become, perhaps something that you haven't accomplished yet, like, you know, going to the Olympics.
Dream? My dream?
Just like good students, as soon as you're done, please put your pencils down.
On the top, dream what? A dream?
A dream you had as a child.
Can you repeat?
Now, we didn't understand what you want us to do other than draw.
Just draw yourselves on the piece of paper, stick figure, and write a message or a sentence stating your dreams as a child, or perhaps some dreams that you have right now.
What do you think this is?
Now, when you're done, please crumble the paper slowly.
Crumble the paper slowly, slowly.
Crumble your paper.
Crumble them.
Crumble the paper slowly.
They just did a Picasso.
Now you read them.
This symbolizes bullying in our schools.
My dreams.
I get what they're saying.
Crush your dreams.
Pull the mic down for them.
Open the paper and iron.
Make the paper fly.
That looks like me, sold and wrinkled. Thank you, Alan.
This symbolizes support.
This symbolizes support. So, basically, the scars of bullying can sometimes last a lifetime, even with support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you again for this great presentation. Really good job. Now we will go into public comment. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee this evening?
My name is Melissa Bubble, and I live at 650 Third Avenue in Wensocket. Last meeting, I stated that I have yet to hear when you will meet the parents with transportation issues at each school to discuss how us parents dislike the idea of a mega school at a dangerous highway area. That is, to somehow house over 1,000 students, not including staff, with already shortages in busing and teaching. Sounds to me, we are putting money first and our children last once again. I ask, when will you make it known of these meetings at each school? It has been months now, and I haven't heard of any meeting taking place at any of these schools. Also, I have learned that there has been letters sent out terminating the continuation of behavioral teachers that are desperately needed for next school year. Again, seems to me you're putting our kids' needs on the back burner. My question is why? I am now escalating this by now calling in the news channels. It is absurd that you are so focused on a mega school and adding to Wensocket's debt instead of supporting our kids and teachers whom love these schools. Instead of trying to keep up with the Joneses, we need to realize that we are a poor city and in debt and in dire need of repair and less destroying of what little open land we have left. Bless you. My petition against the new school continues to grow. I will continue to talk to people. I ask that you stand by your word and make these meetings more public and known and encourage the younger generation to attend, not just to voice the concerns of issues, but also to see the good like we saw tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Seeing or hearing none, we will go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, I would like to share some exciting news regarding one of our Wensocket High School juniors, Cody Antico. Cody is an example of perseverance, hard work, and determination. At the beginning of the school year, like many of our students, Cody had a lot of disruption with personal situations at home that could have easily disrupted his education, enough that most adults would throw in the towel. Instead, Cody decided not to do that. He used his resources at school and has not only persevered, but he's excelled. Though he's very humble, he shared some incredible news with the school staff recently. Cody has been accepted to the New England Institute of Technology, where he will be enrolled in the 2024 Early College Program to complete his senior year. Cody is a real testimony that although life can be complicated, our circumstances should and do not dictate our future if we do not allow them to. So I want to congratulate Cody. Cody is here this evening. Cody, if you would stand up, please, so we can recognize you. We are so proud of you, and we wish you all the luck in your future. And no doubt, you are going to be, you already are, a very successful young man, and the sky is the limit for you. So thank you for being an amazing Wensocket Villanovan. The Mental Health Resource Fun Run in Fair is scheduled for Saturday, May 11, right here at Hamlet Middle School, on the grounds from 10:00 AM to noontime. The district will also have kindergarten registrations on site. Some of the outdoor activities will include a fun run, 100-yard dash, touch a truck, obstacle course, and the Warriors Football Skills Clinic. Some of the indoor activities will include over 20 mental and behavioral health agencies and after-school programs that will be here for the community, face painting, arts and crafts, and other activities, and special gifts. A free barbecue lunch will be provided. Last year, we had over 300 families who attended, and we hope this year will break that number. Rain or shine, it will be held, so we're looking forward to a lot of families coming out for that great opportunity. Broadway returns to Wensocket High School, as the Wensocket High School Theater Arts Department will be performing Disney's Beauty and the Beast on Thursday, that's tomorrow, April 25, Friday, April 26, and Saturday, April 27, at the Wensocket High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. You don't want to miss out on being a part of another memorable production by Mrs. Maello and her incredibly talented theater arts students. We hope to see you there. Just incidentally, I was at the high school this afternoon. They were rehearsing. They were in costume. They look wonderful, and they're excited, and I can't wait. I'll be there tomorrow, and I know some of us here are going to be attending tomorrow, and we'll be attending over the weekend, so can't wait for another amazing production of our theater arts students. Villanova Middle School, National Junior Honor Society. Their induction ceremony will take place on Wednesday, May 1, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the cafeteria at Villanova Middle School. This year, we've had the most number of students, 20 from Villanova, so that's a wonderful opportunity for us to celebrate our students from Villanova Middle School who will be inducted into that prestigious society. And I'm going to read part of what our Junior Honor Society students have done as part of their community project was the St. James Episcopal Church here in Wensocket. When we received, they did some fundraising, and they did some donations. They collected some toiletry products for the church, and this is a letter that I'm going to read from the pastor. Says, "Dear members of the Junior Honor Society, on behalf of St. James Episcopal Church Food Pantry, New Beginnings Meal Site, and the Cost of Many Colors Clothing Bank at St. James, we thank you for your efforts to collect and donate the hygiene supplies delivered here last week. All three of these services benefit the needy of our community by providing basic and emergency items, because so many of those we see are homeless or couch surfing. Until they can obtain affordable housing, their needs for hygiene supplies are great. We don't receive this type of donation very often, so we were very excited to receive what you all collected. Many thanks to all of you." So congratulations to our National Junior Honor Society students at Villanova Middle School. And lastly, the week of May 6 through May 10 is National Teacher Appreciation Week, so I just want to make that announcement. As we get closer to that time, we are going to have some celebrations at each of our schools, as we usually do, to celebrate our teachers and our educators, our wonderful teachers and educators here in Wensocket. So look out for that. We look forward to another great celebration, weeks-long celebration, as we honor our teachers and educators here in the Wensocket Education Department. And with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, that concludes my recognitions and announcements this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any member have any comments, questions for him?
Chairman, could I just ask a question? Could I ask you a question, Cody? What do you plan to study?
Video games.
Playing video games?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, wow. Well, good luck. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the April 10, 2024 Open Meeting Minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes, dilutions, deletions? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any member want to discuss any item in the consent agenda? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into communications. Dr. McGee, I turn that over to you.
Mr. Chairman, I will briefly discuss with the committee Personnel Matters update, as you have in your file.
Before then.
We missed.
The communications.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Upcoming FBLA National Leadership Conference. Here we go.
Mrs. Croft and her students are here.
How do I know? It works.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today. My name is Maryam Kaba, and I'm this year's 2023-2024 president for our Wensocket FBLA chapter.
Hi, everyone. My name is Montre D'Angelo, and I'm the vice president for the 2023-2024 Wensocket FBLA Chapter. Before we start the presentation, we just wanted to share great news with you all. This year, our chapter size has doubled from membership size last year, and just in general, it's great to see the chapter grow in size and see previous members strengthen their membership. Thank you.
This year's Future Business Leaders of Americas State Leadership Conference was held at Johnson and Wales University on March 7. The Wensocket FBLA chapter had a lot of success this year. I'm not sure if you guys have the slideshow, but we placed from ranging first to fourth place.
So during our State Leadership Conference, we had many opportunities to network with those who were hosting panels, as well as other FBLA members. Personally, I had the pleasure of speaking with an executive from a car manufacturing company, and I learned the needed development of a person's both ability and personality to grow in partnership with their company and to ensure the success of the branches they manage.
So I had the opportunity to attend two workshops. The first one, I learned how to create my own small business. It was from a student at Bryant University who owns his own coffee business. And the second one, I learned how to invest in both credit. So thanks to the Wensocket Education Department, I had the opportunity to attend two national leadership conferences. I had the opportunity to go to Chicago and Atlanta, Georgia. So with these experiences, I had the opportunity to see excursions like World of Coca-Cola, College Hall of Fame of Football, the Museum of African-American History, and much more. But I also had the opportunity to network with people from chapters all around the world, like Tanzania and Tennessee. I also had the opportunity to develop skills and learn more what it's like to be in FBLA and what it means to be a member. I feel like those skills this year helped me to prepare for my presentation, and I ended up placing first in all three competitions that I placed in, so.
So this year's National Leadership Conference will take place in Orlando, Florida, from June 29 to July 2.
With FBLA, National Leadership Conference comes a lot of opportunities and skills that we gain.
So for one, we've had the chance to participate in workshops that deal with resume building, public speaking, as well as creating our own LinkedIn profile. Like Miriam stated before, we've also had the chance to network with international chapters ranging from Tanzania to Tennessee.
I just want to say, because of FBLA, my LinkedIn is looking real nice right now. Because of NLC, I had the opportunity to connect with my online friend Kathy. So we're both Alexander Hamilton Scholars, but we weren't able to meet because it's like a virtual awards, so we do meetings online and stuff. So I had the opportunity to meet her in person and connect, and we definitely got to talk about the differences in our chapter. She's from California, so her chapter is like four times our size, so we got to compare our chapters and learn from each other, and it was really great connecting with a friend that I didn't think I would be able to connect with. And without FBLA, I don't think I'd be able to travel and see the world as much. FBLA has given me the opportunity to go to places like Atlanta, Chicago, and hopefully Orlando, Florida this summer, and I've been able to really see a world outside of Wensocket and take what I've learned from the other communities and other schools that we've been in and networking with other people and bringing it back to our chapter.
So like Miriam stated before, sorry, my apologies, in addition to what Miriam and I said, there's also many scholarship opportunities to help students fund National Leadership Conference, and I think that is a very big part of what we do.
Lastly, because of FBLA, I definitely want to double major in international business. So I definitely learned more about international business through a few people who did objective testing or events. I don't remember which one it was specifically, but I learned what international business, what I can do with that as with my other majors as well, nursing, so I wanted to coincide that because of FBLA.
Sorry, just as a question, are you guys able to see the slideshow that we have? Okay, great. So on the sixth slide, we put together a summary of the costs for National Leadership Conference. So just to mention, each student has been working towards saving for National Leadership Conference through work, fundraising, as well as many more opportunities. We hope to attend National Leadership Conference this year and give the new members the opportunity to really understand what FBLA is about. Me personally, this is my first year in FBLA, and I haven't attended a National Leadership Conference before, and I would really love to get the chance to learn more about what it means to be a member, both at a state level and the national level.
Today, we're here asking you to invest into our FBLA chapter. Without the help of the Wensocket Education Department, NLC for me wouldn't be possible the last two years that I went. Speaking personally, I work two jobs, so I know what it's like to try and to raise money, help support myself and my family, so I know we're trying to save as a chapter. We have a fundraiser coming soon. Everyone else is saving through their job and stuff, but we know our efforts aren't enough. We're asking you to invest into our youth and give us the opportunity to see the world outside of our own. and bring what we've learned back to the community and try to incorporate it into our chapter, but also our school community as well. Also, to give us the opportunity to expand our intellectual curiosity regarding business. Now, because of FBLA, I am double majoring in international business and nursing. And I feel like it's important for us to really learn inside the classroom, but also learn outside of the classroom. Education inside the classroom is important, but education hands-on and outside of the classroom is just as important. And FBLA is not just a business organization, but it's preparing us for, to be the future, like the future changemakers in business and also our communities as well. So we're definitely asking you guys to invest into our youth.
And on behalf of the entire One Socket FBLA chapter, we thank you for allowing us to share our experiences at the state leadership conference and our host for the national leadership conference. We thank you for your continued support for our chapter and allowing us for many opportunities to strengthen ourselves, not only as students, but as growing younger adults as well. Again, we ask you to continue to invest in our FBLA chapter. Thank you.
We also have awards here with us. We're going to bring it up to show you guys.
Thank you. We will not have a student representative report as he is probably in dress rehearsal right now at the high school.
Go see Matthew Thursday and Friday.
This is not going on. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file communications. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, excuse me.
Are we keeping you awake, Mrs. Costa?
I'm sorry.
We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to wait until.
Sure.
Until our wonderful students.
That is really awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, the awards, I guess.
Insurance risk management. Nice. Here we am. Have you decided where you're going? Batista. Oh, congratulations.
Nice.
Wonderful. He was senior this year as well. I'm sorry, junior. So you're another.
Lots of stuff to be proud of.
Incredible.
Always here for us.
Wow.
I'm going to miss you guys.
Biggest cheerleader for this program, I swear.
This guy disrespectfully.
Best place journalism. Cool.
It's fantastic.
Great job. Wonderful. Missed the luck.
Great job.
Odd wear. Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, so I have.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you. I don't have a lot this evening under my report. Personnel matters update. There are just some positions. One custodial position, second shift, secretary to the Director of Special Education, Census Secretary and teacher assistant positions that we've added since our last meeting. You have any questions? I would be happy to answer.
Anyone?
Questions you might have.
What was the substitute going as far as?
Well, there are actually, there are some that we have on here, building-based subs. We have one at Coleman. We have a one at the high school as well.
Still filling spots well, then?
We are. It's evened out, but it's, we have many more now than we had prior to the $200 a day.
Excellent.
So, yeah, so that's worked out nicely.
Mr. Perrier, were you going to add something? No? Okay. Do you have more, Dr. McGee?
That's, that's all I have this evening.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Today, we had a finance subcommittee meeting. And Mr. Perrier, do you want to do this now? Discuss this, or do you want to do it later?
I think we just, there was only one item on the agenda, and that is new business number four, the One Socket Education Department FY25 Local Budget Request. Think we can just talk about it, new business.
I agree. And I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a financial update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Morale, would you give us your special education report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So below is the special education enrollment snapshot as of April 17th. If you take a look through it, there is right now a total number of 1,467, 64 students, I'm sorry, receiving special education services within our schools from pre-K to 12th grade, sorry. This represents 27% of our total enrollment population of 5,401 students. We still have 19 students in our transpro classroom, which is our 18 to 22-year-old classroom. They're transitioning out into the community. We also have 121 students in our out-of-district placements with only 114 of them with IEPs. And we have about 204 students in our private schools and pre-K programs with IEPs. The numbers are slightly higher than last time I reported out. The end of the year, we tend to go higher with IEPs because evaluations, the 60-day window, the time for MTSS to kick in, and referrals. So we are right now with all of that together with our out-of-district placements, pre-K, we're at about 31% of students receiving special education services from the One Socket Education Department.
Is the increase due to more IEP evaluations or these influx of students to the school system?
Both.
Both.
Both. We've had, we've had some students leave the district that do not have IEPs. So that increases our number. And also, we've had students move into the district with IEPs, and we've also had new students qualify for services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Ms. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into new business. And the first item is discussion. And I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 24-07 Food Service Management Company, FSMC for School Food Service Program and Cost Reimbursable. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier.
Sitting in front of the school committee this evening is the bid results for 24-07. Sealed bids for a food service management company for the food service program were received on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, 10:00 a.m., at which where they were publicly opened and read. The posting of the RFP, the evaluation process and timeline were pre-approved on behalf of Ry by the firm of Ryers and Stoffer. The bid was posted to the One Socket Education Department's website with the State of Rhode Island and the State of Rhode Island Division of Purchases, with two vendors responding. And the selection committee met on 3/26 to review. And after the scoring, it was determined that Chartwells would be awarded the contract.
Would you want to go into more detail as to why?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a very tightly overseen bid process with the Department of Education. So everything is reported back to them. It's a very, we developed a scoring matrix of 100 points. There were various things on there. If you go to the second page, you can see the breakdown of all the points there. And while fiscally, Sedexo did come ahead because there was a higher guarantee. Other items like the staffing plan, PD, innovation involving the students, and particularly a Chevron staff really caught the eye of the evaluation committee. And in the end, that was enough to beat out Sedexo with Chartwells as the total score.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Mr. Perrier, just two questions, please. Who was the selection committee?
Selection committee was, it was seven people. And they were all principals throughout the district. So, yeah, that was, that was the, the selection committee was the seven principals.
Seven principals throughout the district. And the other question too, you sort of mentioned it, but looking at the scores, you know, some of them are very close, some of them are good, some of them. But that guarantee for food service account, it was pretty low from Chartwells. It was 48 out of 70.
That was a, basically, we did a calculation to come up with that amount. Sedexo was awarded 10 points because they, of course, had the highest guarantee. And the calculation was done to figure out what percentage of Chartwells was. And it ended up being 6.9% if you look at the guarantee. So it was a couple hundred thousand dollars lower. I will stress that the money that we get on our nutrition fund, it can't be used to fill gaps in our general fund. It needs to be put back into the food service program. So while we did give up a little bit of money on the guarantee, we can't really utilize that money in our general fund operational budget. So that's money that we put back into the program anyway. And it really appears, if you look at the presentation, that's, more money is going into certain areas with the Chartwells to begin with, thus reducing the guarantee.
All right, those are my two questions.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 24-08 District-Wide Transportation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier, Mr. Notorianni.
The school committee, in front of the school committee now is 24-08 District-Wide Student Transportation. Sealed bids for district-wide student transportation of the One Socket Education Department were received on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, at 11:00 a.m., at which time they were publicly opened and read at March, at the same time there. The bid was posted on the One Socket Education Department's website and the State of Rhode Island Division of Purchases website with two vendors responding. And after the review, it was determined that Durham School Services received the contract. Again, I will remind the school committee that this is a three-year contract with two single optional years that will come back to the school committee for voting down the road.
And why, why was Durham selected?
Well, it's, over the three years, it's $700,000 cheaper to utilize Durham. As we kind of talked about this afternoon, our general fund is looking at some changes going into next year. So, you know, at this time, I just don't feel like we can really be absorbing any additional expense in our general fund. So this was a bid that was selected solely on price.
Any comments or questions? Mrs. Costa?
Yeah, I get that there's an expense, but what about the reliability of Durham? Like, I know we've had quite a few issues with transportation. So.
Yes, we had had quite a few issues. And I can only present what the recommendation here is. If the school committee chooses to go in a different direction, that's a direction that we can go in.
Okay, just asking.
From my understanding, the other, the other bidder, if you would, is for a student. And there've been some comments that reliability issue is there as well. So we've been working with Durham. We address those comments or those issues as they come up. And we will continue to do so. Any other comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss the amendments to the district's dress code policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Mrs. Kepiscus, would you take us through this?
I'd be happy to. It is my, this came before me without going before policy because of some urgency as a result of some new social media challenges, which we seem to be putting out fires regarding social media challenges all the time. This one in particular had to do with students wearing full-face masks or other techniques, shall we say, to obscure being able to view the student's entire face for identity purposes, which isn't just a problem with identifying students, but also with identifying people who don't belong in our buildings, who are not students, who are not staff. So as a result, I was asked to help develop some language that would address those as best we could because of the somewhat urgency of the need to address this before it becomes a more widespread issue. We chose not to bring it before the policy subcommittee because it's not a substantive, really, change. It's intentionally a change to address a particular issue. The only other substantive change that I made was with regard to some language that referred to our students as boys and girls. And I've replaced that language with all students, which just makes more sense. So that, basically, there are three clauses that we're adding. We're banning ski masks, something known as shysti masks, or other non-medical face coverings, which leave either no part of the wearer's face exposed or exposed only the eyes and/or the mouth of the wearer. None are permitted to be worn on school property, including in-school buildings. Number two, apparently, there's a trend among students to wear a blanket as a coat, as an outer wear. I don't know whether that's because they don't have coats and blankets are what they have, but that also poses a problem. So blankets shall not be worn by students inside the school buildings. Blankets worn to school by students as an outer covering and place of, or in addition to a coat, shall be folded, there's some question about that language,[1570.74] shall be folded, there's some question about that language, uh, and or stored by the wearer while in the school building. Not sure exactly what stored would mean. I'm not sure who has access to lockers and who doesn't any longer. So as a result, we simply decided to, I simply decided to go with the words folded and or stored uh because presumably it's gonna just get shoved in a backpack. But the point is, we don't want it worn in the halls, worn in the classrooms, draped over chairs so that people can trip, slip and fall. Um, it needs to be put somewhere contained. And the last one is is one that just came up with in the last few days. Um, and it's no full zip front hoodies. Um, they're commonly known as a brand name Bape, B A P E hoodies or similar brands, which permit the hoodie to be zipped above the chin so as to obscure most or all of the wearer's face. None of them will be permitted to be worn on school property or in school buildings. I am not talking about a zip front hoodie with the zipper ends at the neck. These are hoodies where the zipper extends along the side of the entire hood, so the zipper can be pulled up at any point to cover any or all of the wearer's face, which poses the exact problem as the ski masks or the shysti masks. So as a result, we need to ban these as well. Uh, we banded back and forth, Dr. McGee, uh, just tonight about whether or not we were just going to ban students being able to zip them, but be able to wear them. And I feel um after talking to someone who's more close in age to our students, that that would just become a game. If you simply say you can't zip them up in the building, you're gonna have students that are gonna consider that a challenge and will zip up the hoodie just to see if they can do it without getting caught. Not all students, but some students will consider that a challenge. So it just makes more sense to ban it so it's not an issue at all. So it's clear to students, they're not allowed to wear any clothing at all that would obscure their face for non-medical reasons. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any comments?
Dr. McGee, you were behind this as well.
Mrs. Costa.
A quick question, um.
Speak into the mic, please.
I know that um majority of the time, we do have a dress code in place right now, and majority of the students don't follow the dress code. So what are we gonna do to make sure that things like this are being enforced?
That's Dr. McGee.
So that is part of my responsibility to ensure that the administrators are enforcing the policies that we have, regardless of the policy. Um, here, obviously, we're talking about the dress code policy. But um that, that's my, my role is to ensure that they understand what those policies are, what they entail, and that they're being enforced. Because you're right, a policy is only as good as its enforcement.
Anyone else?
Mr. Kepiscus? For the second time.
Sure.
Um, essentially, the dress code policy is dated. I think we can all agree it's dated. It needs to be revisited, but that isn't something that we wanted to take the time to do with regard to this moment. It is on our list to go back on our policy subcommittee uh agenda, but we felt we needed to address this particular issue because of the the danger and risk posed at this time because of these social media challenges. So as a result, we didn't address the rest of it. Uh, the intent is absolutely to address the rest of it. The only reason I addressed it, the boys and girls, was because it was glaringly obvious, obvious that that was dated language. Um, and therefore we went with students. And also, the dress code as it stands right now does have possible consequences for failure to comply. Um, and there's a list there of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight possible things that could occur for failure to comply, some of which are clearly outdated, um, which are not permissible. You can't suspend a student because they violate the dress code. That violates state law. Um, but the bottom line is, we intend to go back to address more and fine tune the policy. There just wasn't time to do it, to address it, to make sure we met the needs of this urgent concern. That's why it was done the way, if it's being done piecemeal, I hate to do it that way. Uh, whether or not you're aware of it, we are slowly working our way through the entire policy manual. Um, this is my sixth year on the school committee, and we're still winding our way through the policy manuals slowly but surely. Uh, and our meetings, I don't want you to think we don't work hard, or meetings last close to two hours, if not more, as we discuss each and every these, every one of these policies. Because we'd like to make sure that we're not gonna have to revisit them over and over again. When when I leave, I want there to be a set, good, up-to-date policy manual. That's the hope. Um, so it's on the list to go back to. I don't know if it'll make it before I leave, but that's the plan anyway.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
The last item on our agenda is I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Wasekate Education Department fiscal 25 local budget request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee this evening is the FY25 revenue projections for next year. Um, the district isn't ready to talk about the expense side yet. There's still a lot of work being done on the FY25 budget, expense-wise across the board. Uh, at this time, any release of anything on the expenditure side would be preliminary. And as this is a shaping up to be a very difficult budget season, we want to make sure that what we release is accurate uh with, as much as it possibly can be. As everyone knows, the budget is, you know, fluid, things, things change in the budget. But we just want to make sure what we release is a hundred, 100% entirely accurate before we move forward. So this evening, uh, in order for us to uh let City Hall know what we're looking for, uh, we're gonna run through this revenue expenditure projec- or revenue, revenue projection, not expenditure projection, excuse me, for the next fiscal year. So in front of you, if you do look at the spreadsheet that I provided, these are the main revenue categories in our general fund and S R three, uh, which includes not just S R three, but the S R DSP. Uh, these are the major revenue shifts we're looking at next fiscal year. Um, I've kind of broken down the state aid into several categories like it normally is, which is the state education aid, uh, EL categorical, non-public transportation, and local education aid. I I've also listed uh S R three and S R DSP, not the entire grants, but particularly what we're spending on salaries and benefits, as well as purchase services for those, those two grants, because those are going to be uh items that we need to kind of figure out what we're gonna do with next year as the funding is stopped. So, so if you really look at, and and these aren't all our revenue categories, we have included CRP in here. Uh, CRP is still being developed uh for next year. Um, these are the main revenue categories that will affect the general fund. So if you, if you cut right to the bottom line, uh, we have about 107, 107 million dollars worth of revenue in FY24 in these categories. And next year, as per my most up-to-date calculations, uh, we're gonna be down to about 100 million point eight. So it's about a loss of 6.5 million dollars in revenue we're looking at for next fiscal year. Uh, that's if we get the 4% increase from the, from the city, which is what we asked for here. We did ask for the maximum 4%. Uh, that amount is 662,000 dollars. That's what 4% increase looks like for the city Wasekate. Um, so if we do get that 4% increase, we're still looking at a 6.5 million dollar uh reduction in revenue going into next year. Um, so that's a pretty, pretty sizable. Now, if you look at it, really the breakdown of it, it really has to do with the ending of the federal money, the S R money. Um, I have sat here and commented on that several times over the last few years that that this would be a year of reckoning, FY25. And I think uh you can tell here by the information that I've shared this evening uh that that we are uh going to be looking at some cutbacks. Uh, there's really no other way to sugarcoat this at this point. 6.5 million dollars cannot be made up with a simple, a few simple supply line cuts and, you know, maybe tightening the belt here or there. Uh, we, we are gonna be looking at cuts next fiscal year. So again, uh, I will finalize my comments by saying, this is just a reduction in revenue. Um, as you know, and probably know from doing your, uh, balancing your checkbooks at home, everything's getting more expensive. Well, that's the same thing for the school department. So that 6.5 million dollars doesn't even really represent the full net of what we need to get to for next fiscal year. Um, we have increased pricing for busing, which we just approved. Uh, it's gonna be another 200,000 dollars we need to add into the budget. Um, several other purchase services, they're gonna go up. And then last but not least, uh, the, probably the biggest item out there, uh, contract negotiations are going on right now. So we don't know where we're gonna land on that. But again, uh, any money we give out in raises, it's gonna make the 6.5 million dollar number go higher. So next year, again, is shaping up to be a very difficult year. Uh, we spent time in uh the admin, the admin team has spent time in the conference room looking at this. Feel like we're starting to get a good handle on it. Um, but there are still some more decisions that we need to make, and we want to make sure that we're making the best decisions for the school department and for the students of Wasekate. So uh, we really don't want to rush through this. To kind of give you a uh layout of the timeline, uh, the next important date for us is June 1st. Uh, that is the date that final layoffs are due, due uh for budget constraints. So uh, right now, we're planning on having a finance subcommittee meeting to present the budget, the final budget as we know it, at the end of May. Uh, it'll be the same day, much like we did today. Uh, it'll be a finance subcommittee meeting on the day of the school committee meeting at the end of May. And then uh, at that point, we'll have a finalized budget. Uh, we'll find out uh what's going to happen at the local level and the state level with final budget adjustments sometime in June. And at that point, we will go back to the budget drawing board, depending on what the changes are. And then maybe by the end of July, once we take in that new information, we'll have a final budget for fiscal year 25 ready to go. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of this, but uh this evening, uh, I am asking that the school committee approve a 4% increase uh from uh the, our locally municipal municipality here.
Just some comments. Mr. Perrier. Where the, the way you and your staff and your administration have prepared the revenue side uh of the budget is the way it should be, and you should be congratulated for that because we don't want to be dealing with fantasy uh or guesswork. Because if you guessed and said, well, we're bound to get millions more from the state, sure, they're gonna give us more, they have to. And then we prepare a full budget based on that, that'd be totally wrong. Um, you're, you're looking at what you know, you know what we know right now, and we're looking at a 6.5, almost 6.6 uh reduction in revenues, and that's including the 662, which is the 4%. So to me, this is the way to go. There's a lot of work to be done because once we know what the revenues are, now you know what, how much money we'll have and how much we can spend. And if you're planning ahead now and saying if with the what ifs, where we are now, here's where we, we, we will be with expenditures, but we have open items, like you said. Transportation, you, you're talking about the contracts, but also the other big one is medical, which is always the big unknown. I mean, we, uh, obviously, uh, the, uh, you know, that's, that's always a guess. And we know based on every year, like this year, we're way under budget uh because we, uh, we're over budget because people were sick and had operations and whatnot. And it's tough to, it's tough to budget that number, but we know we gotta, we may have to increase our budget because of what's happened this year. So I'm looking at, you know, whatever time it takes uh to get a good budget that's balanced. Because the last thing we want is to finalize a budget, then a month later, oops, we find ourselves in the red. That cannot happen because we need to issue a, and approve a well-balanced budget. So this is, this is a good start, and I agree, I think we should be asking in the city. They may turn around and say, no, we can't afford it, but we must make the ask based on our needs.
So, so as you stated, uh, we won't probably hear back from the city till after that budget preparation that I spoke about in May. So we'll be budgeting, uh, level funded for the city Wasekate for our first round until we get, you know, final, final approval, one way or another. And then we will make the appropriate steps and make, take the appropriate actions after we receive final word on where the funding will land next year.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. McGee.
Couple of comments, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you. So this, this is really the perfect storm. On two, on two sides. Number one, the S R, the loss of, of 24 million dollars in S R funds. And and we knew this three years ago. Um, if the committee recalls, and I'm, and I'm sure you do, when we received, you know, prior to us receiving the money, we knew how much we were gonna get. And we were very strategic as to how we spent that money. We knew that we couldn't put the majority of that 24 million dollars into salaried positions because we knew that in three years we would come to a point, which is coming in September, where we would lose the money, therefore we would have to lose positions that we established with those funds. So we were, we were very strategic. However, you, you can't spend 24 million dollars on just programming. And so there were positions that we, we added um with, with the extra money. Second piece to this is while we were not expecting we would receive a um, uh, from, from the, from the governor, the governor's education budget, we weren't expecting that, that the budget would be cut. Now, there are those out there who would say, well, the state didn't really cut your budget because you received more money through M L L categorical funds. And to a certain degree, that's true. However, we can only use the increase in M L L categorical funds in, in very specific areas. In other words, we can't use those funds across the board like you normally would do with the state funds that are not designated as, as categorical. So this is the perfect storm. I would respectfully ask the governor, um, because his, his first um budget numbers, which came out in January, um, you know, presented us with, with this deficit. I would ask him to, to strongly reconsider as he looks to June and July, when his final budget comes out. Wasekate's not the only district in the state that is going to have to make some cuts and some drastic cuts. This is gonna affect not only us here in Wasekate, it's gonna affect the entire state of Rhode Island. Coupled with the fact that many, many districts received a good amount of money through S R, those funds will be, will be gone. So I would ask that those in, in the community, and I know that the, the school committee has been receiving uh letters and emails from staff, you know, imploring the, the, the committee to not make cuts. And and really, they're preaching to the choir because none of us want to have to make any cuts, the committee included. What I would ask those who have been sending letters and emails is I would ask them to reach out to the council, the city council, because ultimately, you know, we're, we're making our um, our, our plea to them, and we'll be making it official after this meeting. They're the ones who, who will make the determination how much, if any, extra funds the district's going to receive. So I would ask them to reach out to the council because they're ultimately gonna be making that decision. I would also ask folks in the community, um, educators included, to reach out to our, our statewide elected officials to put pressure really on the governor and the budget that he will be ultimately submitting his final budget. Um, because again, we don't want to have to make these cuts, but we're in a position where, as Mr. Perrier stated, we're not going to create a budget that's in the red. So as a result, unless there is an influx on both sides, um, we're gonna have to make cuts. I don't want to have to because we've worked really hard to get to the point where we are now, where we're able to better support our students than we did three years ago. But let's be honest, we're, we're, we're not anywhere near where we, we want to be, even with that influx of money. But losing that money is going to make a big difference here in Wasekate. So um, you know, I just, I, I would ask people to reach out and to contact those folks and let them know the effect it's gonna have on our students, our teachers, and this community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to add to, and thank you, Dr. McGee. Um, there's at least 20 to 25 other school committees in our, in our state that have sent resolutions to the, to, to the General Assembly, to the governor, to everyone, saying, look, you, you cut our budget, you, you're, you're really hurting our education system by, we're losing 26 million dollars for the whole state. And we've objected to that. And hopefully, our representatives and our senators are gonna do something about it. But I think it's a good idea to reach out to all of them. And I agree with you, we, my colleagues and I have been receiving emails, phone calls, could be uh messages saying, and I, and on social media, I've heard that the school department is in trouble. We're in trouble financially. We are not. We are being very, very responsible in, in looking at this year's budget based on the actual numbers and the revenues we are going to be receiving uh from the state, as well as we've just lost S R, and as well as some of the costs are going up. So we are being very, very responsible in dealing with the financial situation that's presented to us. And we will do so when we've, even in finalizing this budget over the next few months. But it's incumbent upon everybody in the city to focus on where the money is. It's certainly not here. We, we just looked at it. We're eight, we're gonna be 6 million dollars short, almost 7 million dollars short. City council, uh, city fathers and mothers, they have to look at the requests we're making and prioritize those funds. Now, they are, we know the city has issues, financial issues. They may not be able to give it to us, give us anything. We have to make the ask anyway. And they should prioritize their education system. Because frankly, they keep telling us that our students are our future. It's putting your money where your words are, and we hope that they do that. But we are in a difficult year. Mr. Perrier's been talking about this for three years. He kept saying, this is the year. And during those years that were, the fatted calf was here, called S R, we, we had no issues. Now we do, but we will, we are being very responsible, uh, and we will continue to do so uh right until we issue the budget. Any other comments? Mrs. Kepiscus.
I wasn't going to, but I feel compelled. I, I've gotten complaints from people who have said to me, we shouldn't have filled, used S R to hire staff to deal with the behavioral issues for our students, positions that we couldn't support in a conventional budget. I get that. But here's the problem, we had damaged students who were far more damaged post-COVID than anything we've ever seen before.
seen before. So funds were used for what they were intended for, COVID consequences, and we hired behavioral interventionists, social workers, school psychologists, more than we had before, because we needed more than we had before. And Mr. Perrier has been preaching to us for three years. Those funds are going to dry up. Those funds are going to dry up. FY '25 is the cliff. He's been saying that, "Fears." And I've been listening. We've all been listening. But then, the question also follows with, our students are no less damaged. Having those people here for three years hasn't solved the problem. There's no magic wand they could wave. Our students are still damaged. The students coming in are still damaged, because the students coming in are still children, but actually toddlers of COVID. So they're coming in even needier than any toddlers we've ever seen before. Preschoolers, more needy than we've ever seen before. Kindergartners, more needy than we've ever seen before. And yes, we're going to have to make cuts. And I wholeheartedly agree with the people who are reaching out to us and saying, "You can't cut the BIs. You can't cut the school psychologists. You can't cut the social workers. You can't cut the paraprofessionals in the preschools and the kindergartens. They are all too greatly needed because of the needs of our students." And I don't disagree. But my response to them is the same every single time. Then where do we cut? You tell me where we cut, because I don't know where else we cut. And I think that perhaps the people that are sending us the letters need to keep that in mind. I'm not on the negotiating committee. I have no idea what's going on with the contracts. But if you want to keep those essential staff, you need to keep that in mind as union leaders when you sit down at the negotiating table as well, because the cuts have to come from somewhere. They can't all come from the top. Some have to come from the top. They can't all come from the bottom. Some have to come from the bottom. But I think it can be spread around, and that's my concern. And I know we're not there yet. We're going to do that in May. But I just, I don't serve as the financial subcommittee, but I want to put my two bits in while I have the chance, that, you know, if you take a paraprofessional out of a preschool room, and some kid's having a meltdown, and some other kid's got to pee, you need that paraprofessional. That's just the way it is. Any of us who've had children know what toddlers are like. So you can't just, and I think we all agree, you can't just go over and look across the board and say, "Okay, they're all gone." Can't do that. But everybody's got to give a little to keep what you need to make the schools functional and a place you want to go every day as a student and as a staff member. And that may make me unpopular, and that's fine, but you've got to think about everybody. And as a taxpayer in the City of Windsocket, I think, reaching out to the city council, sadly, I don't think you're going to get a lot of response from them, because they have an awful lot of financial woes on their side right now. Going back many, many years, part of the reason why we've been level-funded for all these years was part of the way things were run on the city side for all these years. And it was really, is it a level fund, so taxes didn't go up and people would get reelected? Those days are over. You need to figure out now how you're going to balance your budget, but you can't devastate us in the process, not if you want to sell Windsocket. If you want to sell Windsocket to local business, you've got to improve its educational outcomes. And I'm not saying money's the solution, but money is, lack of money is certainly part of the problem. Thank you.
Mrs. Capiscus, I agree with you. Money is not the problem, but money funds people. So money, the way we're looking at it, equates to people now. And one of the reasons it's so difficult in looking at the expenditures is what you're talking about. Who do you cut? Where do you cut? How do you cut? And that's, and that's, and those conversations are happening every single day. And so when we get to that point, we're going to be looking at it very closely. Mr. Perrier, staff, the administration, Dr. McGee, they're doing that now. We all recognize that we, we're a different school system post-COVID than we were before. And there are different needs that we have now that we never had before. And all of that has to be taken into the equation. Like Dr. McGee said, it's the perfect storm. Everything is hitting us at once. It's not like we could have one, and then the other, and the other. No, it's all now. Anyone else?
Well said, Ms. Capiscus.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perrier.
Just one more thing to add.
Sure.
On Ms. Capiscus's comments, we are looking at everything. This is not just absolutely right. It's just going to be one cut, one section of something out. That's not how we're approaching it. We're looking at everything, from top to bottom in the budget, all positions, all unions, everything, everywhere. So there's not a one-size-fits-all solution to this. You just can't cut everything out, like she said. I think that was very poignant, very accurate as to what we're going through right now.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. I appreciate hearing that, because we're all hearing the same thing, I'm sure, in our emails, messages, anonymous letters, which, by the way, don't bother to send. You don't sign your name. I'm not going to bother to read it. I'm sorry. You're not going to put your name on the line? I'm not interested. I'm not going to hold it against anybody. If you send me a letter, sign your name. Just sign your name. But that's what we're all hearing. We're all hearing, "Have I got to cut the BIs and the social workers and the school psychologists?" Yes, because they were SER-funded. That doesn't mean we don't recognize they're still needed. It's just a matter of how many can we fund right now. So I think that's the bottom line. I want people to understand that as they're writing us those letters. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Having no other items on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:16. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Great job. Lynn, great job.
Yeah, Lynn, that was very well said.
Well said.
Sitting here and saying things over and over again. Shouldn't have funded.